All right, this is the meeting of the Eastham Elementary School Committee being held here February 11th in 2020 to 2025 at 5:00 P. M. The meeting will be video recorded and broadcast over local access panel H and through their town website at www dot eastham dash N A dot com. Thank you. There is a current president and agenda changes?
No agenda change.
Okay. Any people for public comment? Yes, Mary.
I have a question. My understanding that you as the superintendent sent out to all the parents of the elementary and the secondary and the high school students a letter regarding the immigration issue. And I just read about it in the paper about the fact that you sent something and I was wondering what that was and how that might affect the students in the Eastham Elementary School and any of the other schools in the region.
Okay, so just to be clear, normally we don't respond to public comment during, I guess, a rule of thumb in any school. Maybe we never respond, but I'm happy to give a general response on this. But normally as a rule of thumb, we do not respond. So yes, happy to send that letter or there. And Amanda, if you can just let Arlen know, we can pass that letter along to Mary and she can pass them along to whoever. So in essence, we're kind of all in the same position. I think this all caught everybody off guard very quickly. And I think I said this that night at the budget meeting, you know, and nothing has changed since that night. By the way, like from our end, nothing other than the fact that we have sent folks to get trained into what we can do, what we should do, what we shouldn't do, what we can't do. So those kinds of things have been outlined to our staff. We, we know that there's some specific, specific things that we look for. If we don't see those specific things or we can't gauge those specific things, then everybody's just, everything just kind of stops at the door. There's no letting anyone in. There's nothing like that. Our lawyers are on speed dial right now because they're the ones who would guide us any further on this. But we are taking training right now. We, we have two people in our district that are taking lead on this. And that's Kristen Anderson, who's our superintendent and Matt Kravitz, who you've already met. And so they're the two people that are taking lead on this right now. But it's a, as I said that night, you know, you don't want to feel any political bias and that superintendent really has to remain apolitical. But I mean, this is an incredibly uncomfortable position for us and as an educator of 40 plus years, your job is to help protect children and that is one thing you take seriously in the role that you're in. And to be in this kind of incredibly strange position is awkward and uncomfortable. And I think I would speak for probably most, every superintendent across Commonwealth probably would tell you the same thing right now. So there's been no changes since that budget meeting that night. And you know, we're, I think we're kind of all on hold across Commonwealth. I think as soon as anybody hears anything more, we all know to contact the larger group across Commonwealth. So I think we're all pretty much on hold and sitting tight right now to see.
So I'm just assuming that we do have undocumented students.
I think everybody has undocumented students and I want to mention too, that I mean, in fact, we've had this conversation a number of times with our own legal counsel when students are presented to us. I mean, as an example, you have students dropped off, what, two summers ago? Here in Eastham, you had.
Oh, the park.
That's right. And we just, we have to enroll any student that comes to our doorstep. And it's not our job to ask if they are legal or illegal. We, we take in anyone who comes into our doors. And at that point in time, the reason I was involved in that whole process was because we were anticipating the fact that we might be taking some students in from that, from that particular bus drop, so to speak. So I don't know if that helps.
No, no, I just, if I was you, I would be, be concerned as, as the principal of. I mean, we just don't have any idea exactly what might transpire, I guess. It's sort of all on tender hooks and.
But all of our principals are aware of next steps, like they, we said that out and so.
Okay, that's what I would, if I was him, if I was Bill, I would want to know what.
We did, we did that initially when we, when we first got wind that it could happen. We, as a district, pulled some things together and said as a district, this is how we see things moving forward. And then that weekend, a legal memo went out from another district who, whose legal counsel said, this is what we suggest. We took that and we took a look at it. We ran it past our own legal counsel. We made a couple of changes to it. And then we said that out, I think on the next Monday or Tuesday, so that everybody was on the same page. So yes, it's not like we are just waiting to see what happens.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I realize that.
But as with all safety plans, we will not share for obvious reasons to the public what we would specifically do. Because we, we don't do that with our regular safety plans either.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Brooke. And thank you for the question, Mary. Okay, let's go to the administrative report. I do not have a report per se. I would just like to say since our last reading, there have been papers pulled for both seats that are open in May, both committees. Both Sarah and another person has had blue papers, two things on the ballot, so there should not be an empty chair come June.
Wonderful. That's wonderful.
Yeah, we both already got.
Yeah, makes you feel much better. And that also just came back from the library, the line at the library a while ago. We watched, we went through the, we.
Repurposed.
Repurpose, thank you, fancy reposition, repurpose books that the kids did. And they have a great bunch of talented artistic kids and I'm so glad Steve did work, work being recognized by lots of people. The library was brilliant, those are nice. And that should be, Bill, your report, please.
Well, good evening, everybody. Nice to see you. As Dan said, I was going to mention this as well. I just come from that exhibition over there, the repurpose book project. It's kind of neat because it's, bless you. I believe it's middle school and high school and then Eastham kids, right? I don't ever see the, the other elementary schools participate.
That's the personal, you're telling children.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, but it's not the other.
Magnificent stuff, you know? And we had, you know, not to brag at all, but there were several Eastham kids that received grand prize, blue ribbons. So congratulations and really to Ms. Driscoll. You know, they really have shined brightly and she, you know, each year puts them through this process and it's just a wonderful event. So I do encourage you, if you're local, first of all, that, that library is fantastic. I don't spend enough time in it. So it was really neat. It's nice to see the families there and the, and the kids work on display. Just want to mention a couple of highlights from the, the report that I sent to all of you. And if you have any questions in regard to that, please feel free to ask those. So I want to thank everyone for, who attended the all-region budget meeting at the high school. We appreciate your interest and the support of the budget process. And thank you, Brooke, for putting that together. I thought it was, it was neat and to have dinner together and, you know, and then to talk freely about the process. So I appreciate everybody's support in that. That was great. And our EES Parents Group looking ahead is once again hosting a fundraiser in March. This is a huge undertaking for everybody involved and it's a real large fundraiser for them. And our students will be reaching out to family and friends. So if you hear from somebody, please, you know, pledge some support for the number of laps that they will run on that fun run day. Community sponsors are also involved and so thank you in advance to the Eastham community for all the help and, and support. As I mentioned in the report, we continue to make some facility improvements. We have a new intercom system, finally bringing it from the 19th century, I think, to the 21st century. And we continue our effort to improve the playground. We have been involved in contact with, there's some new representatives from the O'Brien sons, which is nice because they, they come and are working with us. So that's great. And we're also getting some bids on replacing the aging cafeteria tables. And we really appreciate that, that other side of our budget that the, the town provides, the capital side, where we can do that type of building and equipment maintenance and just upkeep. So we're, you know, getting grateful for that as well. Anybody, anything on that report that, any questions or anything that I could?
I was just wondering, the school improvement committee, is that the S R C?
Yes.
Who, who is that comprised of?
So we have some parents, some community members, some staff and myself. So right now, Monica is the rep, you know, from the school committee. So she, she attends, right now, a couple of community people, she's got a couple of staff and a parent. So yeah, it's kind of a diverse mix of folks. But we're always accepting the people.
I just was.
Come by. Well, the school improvement camp, yeah, it is actually, you know, a state mandate to, every school has one. You know what I mean? There's bylaws and there's purpose and objectives for that particular community. And it all, they all look probably different depending on who comprises them.
Any other questions, Bill? Thank you very much, Bill.
You're welcome.
Absolutely. So the first thing I want to do is welcome our incoming superintendent. It's, we're so excited to have Glenn Brand join up. Dr. Brand is just a wonderful man. I just want to make a couple of comments here. We, we are thrilled to, to work with Dr. Brand as we transition his move into our central office team. He's well seasoned in regional as well as municipality, single municipality, school districts like, like ours this year. He has outstanding finance experience. He's widely regarded as an excellent educator and leader across Commonwealth. He's definitely the right fit at the right time for NPS. He's kind, compassionate, honest and a strong educational advocate. We will take whatever steps are necessary within our offices to ensure that he is well set up within the district to be highly successful. And he and I were talking the other night, we're going to start at the end of February to start transition process. So that is a smooth time for him. So I'm super excited for him and for, for NASA. It's just awesome. Onto other business, I too, like Bill, I just was so excited about the budget workshop. There was a lot of stress for us leading up to that, which I'm sure you'd all surprised at. Because you can imagine that would be stressful, but it kind of was. There was a lot of logistics to think about and you mentioned the dinner and I remember when Arlen said, why don't we do dinner? Well, no, we don't want to do dinner. She said, no, I think we should do dinner. And then Sue Murray jumps on board, our director of nutritional services and we would love to do dinner. It's like, okay, I was outvoted so quickly. It's like, okay, let's do dinner. And now I'm thinking, wow, that was an amazing idea. I'm so glad to do that.
Very nice, yeah.
And you know, Sue was so excited because she said, you know, we could just show them what our kids are eating. We can just show them the hydroponics, we can just show them all of this. And, and we're going to do it just like we would do a regular day. I'm thinking, what does that look like? But boy, did it ever go well, you know? And I was just, I was just so grateful. So I, I, and I think the fact that we have so many people representing all of the four communities. I mean, every community was well supported and well represented that night. So from my lens, it was just a wonderful night and I wasn't joking, as Robert DeVice pulled me aside and said, because I did say, I think it was at the regional meeting or central office budget meeting, it was one of our budget meetings. I said, if this doesn't go well, you don't ever have to do it again, just because I had this idea before. I mean, that you need to do it again. And he pulled me aside that night before we started and said, no, we're going to do it again. If this doesn't go well, we're just going to say, why didn't it go well? And we'll tweak it so we do it better next year. We did put a couple of little things in the tickler file for next year, but they're small. We would do the dinner again. We would do the, probably even the way that we organized it, I think we would do that again. I think we would have, hold it in the same location again. There were a lot of things that we were saying, yeah, we'll do this again. So a special note of thanks to absolutely everyone and Arlen included, because oh my gosh, we can't do anything without the woman. I mean, she just has everything organized for us and did this. And she started, she started, I think, photocopying in January, early January to make sure that we had enough copies of absolutely everything. So thank you to everyone who took time out of a busy life to come and join us that night. The budget development process for us continues. We continue to have regular ongoing budget meetings. We're in the process of finishing up central office. We are like so close on central office, like literally dollars away from being wrapped up on central office, but close enough that I think we can now plug the numbers into our, all of our other budgets. Because that's one of the budgets we wait for. And then, you know, as soon as we see that they're, they're getting really close, which is where they're at right now. We're hoping that they'll probably pass their budget. I think the first Monday after break, I think is when they're looking at passing that budget. So we're, I think we're good to go with that. And, and just, just depending on how smoothly everything else goes, I think that we're close to really wrapping up. I'm hoping tonight for your purposes, I think you should be close to being wrapped up tonight with Eastham. Orleans, I think, has wrapped up, Wealthy is wrapped up. Brewster, one school is wrapped up, still a little bit of work on the other school. Middle and high school are now wrapped up. So I think, you know, recall, I just want to review this again. We needed all of these budgets to come in to wrap up before we bring in the changes, right? The pre-K, the OTPT that's going to come in, the IT positions that always should have been in central office and weren't. All of that overlay that's going to come down as soon as we have all of these budgets wrapped up. So we are so, so close to that. So we will next week and the week after, between our offices with G O, focus, put a focus on that overlay now and what that looks like to come down. But she's done a lot of work coming out there in that area as well. So we're close to kind of just having this all up. The third item on here is our crisis response work. This is something that's been ongoing for the last four years and something else that's just really close to finishing up before I walk out the door is we have really worked hard. I remember a school committee member asking from Eastham, I think it was one of my first meetings, not my second meeting here. Well, what, what are you really doing for your crisis response? Like, what are you really doing? And I'm thinking, is that not already kind of set in stone? And then the more we dug into it, the more we realized that across it, yes, it wasn't set in stone. And that we had work to do in that area. And in fact, we've had four years worth of work to do that area. And so we are kind of close to wrapping that all up. Whether it's a little tiny crisis or whether it's a medium sized crisis or a big crisis. And then we had, we had wonderful workshop. I mentioned that maybe two months ago, maybe a month ago or two months ago, that we met with our whole team of our safety partners and we had brought somebody in, the police had brought somebody in and kind of just poked holes at our plans and said, wait, have you thought of this? Have you thought of that? And details, quite frankly, that we hadn't thought through. And so we went back, a couple of us, Keith Golly, Kristen Anderson and myself and said, okay, what were the holes that we still need to plug? And so we plugged those holes and we got a plan. And then we created, good work for Kristen Anderson, our assistant superintendent, who went back and said, okay, wait, let's create a flip chart. And that flip chart now is being replicated and published right now, should be available within the month. And that will go up to all of our schools across NPS with a common plan for just about every single thing that you could possibly imagine. And so it's so nice to see that we're kind of wrapping up now. So that's where that sits out. Business Office Software. So that's my last item to talk about. This is huge for us. I mean, enormous. I think our software is, is around 30 years old. I mean, from when it initially came out, had some updates, of course, along the way. But this is the first time since well before G O's time that we are completely changing the platform, et cetera. And this kind of is linked to the, what our municipal partners would know at Morris Munis. This is kind of a munis oriented system. So for three of our four communities, there will be a better tie-in with our municipal friends. And we're not going to have to have nearly the amount of duplication of work that has to be done within our offices and the talent offices within three of the four communities. So we're looking forward to that too. But it's an enormous change. We are not stressing on this. We're working towards it. If we do some fits and starts, then that's just the way it's going to be. We would love to be done and ready to go by July 1st, but if we're not, we're not. And so we're just kind of doing it at our pace. We're a little bit more complex animal than most school districts are. And so that takes us a little bit more time as we're working through it. But the point is, we're doing it. So we are thrilled with that. So that's kind of where we're at. We've had a couple of three hour, two or three, three hour, I think, three, three hour sessions, training sessions already that have started. And so just want everyone to know that that's on, on its way. And so that's my report for tonight. Having to take any questions.
Questions, Brooke, admission board. Okay, I should add one comment. Dr. Dr. Deborah, Dr. Brand is, is in Cape Cod wrestling, which I think is a real positive thing. He understands the culture of Cape Cod. He already knows that. That's part of his background. He doesn't have to get used to, to get any asynchronicities that happened from town to town.
He has a daughter who's a senior this year.
Right, she's joining the high school. But thank you, Brooke. Okay, next is the first reading and for approval informed the wellness policy. We all had a chance to read the policy. Are there any questions or comments on it?
Is this like the other policy where a lot of it is coming from the state?
Yes, this, this, everything that's in here has to be in here to meet state standards.
Okay.
Right.
Like the, the low fat and low fat dairy is coming from the state. It's not coming from us.
No, it's not.
It's not just in there. And this one too had a lot of people involved in it. You had Mary.
Yeah, Mary Elgert shared this and I've heard changes and they did a phenomenal job. I sat in a couple of meetings initially with them, but they worked really hard on this. They can totally encompass everything they need to, both state and federally in terms of wellness.
No, it was great. I only had a problem with the old mouth.
If, and you don't have to know further comments or questions, they have a motion to accept the policy.
I'll make a motion to accept the wellness policy.
Do you have a second?
And a second.
I'm like.
Could you hear us, Amanda? Yes.
A second.
I've not turned, I've not turned on.
Great, just, I think I just turned it off. A second?
Okay, all in favor?
I agree.
Second unanimously. Thank you, Amanda. And thank you. We'll make sure that Mass knows that we are accepting this policy in form. So that we can put it into our full policy manual, whatever, and everything we may get to see that. We will. I know the update, we will, yes, definitely. Our next piece is the F Y twenty bucks expenditure. We also want to.
Thank you. Let's start on page 10 of the report, please. The prime of balance was $125,907. We spent or encumbered $65,747, leaving a balance of $60,153. There was various line movement in, within the operating budget. I'm just going to identify those items that are over $1,000 since last month's report. Starting on page two at the top of the page, line item 2011 contracted services, non-structural technology. We spent $1,233 and we are progressing according to what this budget is. On page three was the middle of the page, line of 2017 substitute teachers. Here we spent or encumbered $1,837 since last month's reporting. And we still have to go back and unencumber some funds in the encumbered line item. You see a negative, negative variance there. That should be, the encumbrance should be reduced by that amount. Moving on to page nine, 2056 contracted services, we spent $3,612 after various repairs and maintenance to the, to the infrastructures. And then finally, on page 10, we had some unbudgeted costs in line of 2101. And that encumbrance was $53,741. We still have some reclassification of some salary line items to rural Kool-Aid, about $35,000. We've also applied for reimbursement through HVAC grant through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. When those, for those funds that we applied for equate to $62,000. So that, those funds will be put back into the operating budget. And then we also have, we will review the utilities line item based upon what's been extended to date and will start projecting out for the rest of the year. So there should be some savings in those two line items as well.
Just a quick question. This is my background with the central office budget. We know that part of the cost for the new tech system that's coming in will be added to this budget.
Yes, sir.
Do we know when we will have that number or if Mary has it?
In the next cycle.
Next cycle.
When this was posted, the central office allocations were not posted. So it's not reflected in here, but the next cycle, we'll see it.
Yeah, there could be one or two little changes the next cycle. So which is typical for us, right? So you've got one more cycle here in the month of March.
It's going to affect this year's budget.
Yes. The cost, the total cost of the tech piece is actually being split between FY twenty five and FY twenty six. We think, and I'm not going to go into it now, this has been a central office budget, been discussing this for several weeks right now. So we're not quite sure why. So I want to make sure we have dollars and cents to cover it for this year. And then next year, it will be added to the budget.
Can I ask you, when you say you were applying for some funding, are you confident that we'll get it?
Well, based upon the paperwork that we provided, Dessie, they have to review it. And then if they have any specific questions, but I believe that we will receive those.
Okay, great.
And let's see, we do the FY twenty six elementary budget.
Thanks.
You've got the newest?
Yeah.
Oh, I have, I have. Well, you can. Through last month's meeting, we were at version two of the operating budget. We were at $4,710,559, an increase of $273,392 or a 6.16% increase. Since last month's meeting, we've been, we've had some movement in various line items that we wanted to incorporate into the budget. So the next three line items in discussions with Principal Crosby, we looked at other salaries staffing. And we believe that there are additional savings within the budget for items. For example, any resignations that we feel are on the horizon, any staff resignations, additional retirements, about $70,713. We're looking at also normal attrition of staff. So we felt that that number was viable. We also looked at the custodial salaries. We had some funds amarked in there for additional services, you know, during the year and during the summer months. So we were able to reduce that line by $10,000. We also looked at the retirement savings that we took in version two. We went back, we looked at the actual salary, we looked at the retirement savings that we had initially projected. But we felt that there was additional dollars to be saved with that retirement. And so that, that is what you're seeing here, an additional $18,546 reduction to the operating budget. So this gets us down to a version three, to $4,611,300, an increase of $174,133 or a 3.92% increase. So we started with 8.57 and we're able to get the budget down as of today to 3.92%.
Thank you. Questions? Yes.
Could we talk a little bit, oh, sorry. Yeah, I just had a question. If you could talk a little bit more about when you said, um, um, the, the salaries with, through attrition, are we, are we losing actual positions from Eastham Elementary?
We're not at liberty to discuss. We'll have more information for you at the next meeting. So we figured, we put this in here that would cover all aspects of the budget without identifying specific positions.
Yeah, keep in mind that we've got a late date with in terms of when people can resign or retire, what have you. And so you kind of have to keep that in mind. So we are not in a position right now to talk specifics on that. But we've gone through and we've taken a look and we've said, what makes sense to us and what can we potentially see coming here? With, when we take a look at the needs of our students, where we're at this year, where we project ourselves to be next year. And that's, and then we make, we have to make a decision. Bottom line is, we couldn't come in, we couldn't stay at 6.16%. We all knew that. And so what does that look like? And so, you know, we've, we've had a number of conversations. So this is nobody working in isolation. This has been a team effort to say, listen, if we take a look back, this makes sense, that we can probably do this and feel comfortable with this. But you know, again, I think, you know, Deb, I think you had also at one point in time said, that's like a bare bones. And we would say it's bare bones and now we're cutting at the bones. Like that's what this feels like to us right now. Like, if anybody disagrees with me?
No, but I did want to make a point too about student need, you know, which is very fluid. You know what I mean? So there's some projections about students, you know what I mean? Those needs, you know, people moving, you know, we just had a student actually roll today that just came through. So it's very difficult to project that. But from what's in front of us right now, I'm thinking, you know, we can go in this direction, you know, as far as meeting student needs and comfortable.
So you feel good about this? You didn't.
Yeah.
You didn't do this because Mary scared you. That's a piece of it, though. It's not that Mary scares us, but Mary lovely, but.
But no, but as Brooke said, you know, I mean, you know, and you had said too, which was a great statement last time or year about, you know, this is bare bones. And, and now, you know, as she said, 6.16 is just unacceptable. We have to, you know, figure out something to, to bring it down.
Yeah.
So. So.
So I don't think that this is, uh, so I, I would really um caution against the term, are you comfortable? No. No, I would say no, but we also know that, you know, what our community's appetite is. At a six point one six percent budget, right? And, and so. And, and with that being said, I mean, you also look at things like, things that we don't have control over. For example, benefits that are going to come through with your pre-K at six point five percent, there's nothing we could do about that. You know, so that puts us, it forces us into a position to have to make additional findings somewhere else because. You have to pay for those benefits at six point five percent. So if I'm saying anything wrong, you know. But that, that's kind of, that's the reality that we're up against, um, because we have to project all of these things for our communities.
Sure, and when you're ready to share that information, is there a way for you to kind of? Give us a, a feel of how it might impact programs, I guess?
I don't see this impacting programs at this particular, in Eastham right now, I don't see this necessarily affecting programs as such.
Okay.
Unless you want to speak to something different. And I think we want to be cautious with how we.
Right, and I, and I think that, that's the challenge, you know what I mean? It's like you have, you know, wouldn't be programming per se, is how. We meet those programs. Do you understand that? Right? Meet the needs of the kids, the programs, and it's just getting strategic to meet those programs and those needs. Based on this, you know. Version three, it will still continue to provide the same services, you know, at Eastham Elementary that are in place now.
What it'll ever elect us, you've got all that kind of stuff remains in place, so, but. Six one point one six, we know is not, it's just not a, not a number we can, we can live with. The town can live with it, it could feel comfortable, and so it's our job to go back and get as close as we can to where we think the town. Is comfortable with, and I, from my lens, I think Eastham is being incredibly gracious. At times when we've had to come to you and say, we have no choice, this is where we're sitting, and that's been the case with the last couple of years. So I think you're seeing this year, I think a, all of our schools are going so hard, and I think we're, we're nailing it, I think, in all schools right now. I think Brewster still has a little situation, but I think all of our schools are right now in this between three and four percent, and that's where we've asked all of us to come in. Our region schools are actually even less than that right now, our region schools, I think, ones at two points, something, what's a three point something.
Will we ever see the initial line item budget adjusted? I, I guess what I'm trying to say is.
The input sheets that you're looking at right now, like.
Yeah, this thing where we could see in version one, that the regular day was up three point seven percent. And special education was up eighteen percent. Will, at some point, on the, on the final one, will that be broken out?
So, I, I'm gonna start, then you can fill in. So basically, the whole point of this, right? And so that people don't, don't get really confused with that.
Right, right.
Right? So version one is what we stick with and say, that just stays there, and then these are the changes that we see coming. Once we get to that final number, and we're close to that, then that feeds back into that. And then Gio and her team go back in and make all of the appropriate changes.
Because I, I just, at the end of the day, it seems like regular day is gonna be a zero percent.
Regularly day will be probably, it, it'll be.
Increase.
Very minimal increase, and so it's out.
Which is typical right across NPS, I took it typical across all schools, it's really classy.
Any further comments or questions with you? Thank you very much, Jill, and we're still in your kind of a department because. Let's see, I'm sorry, we're gonna skip for a minute, I guess, we're gonna skip for a minute. We've been talking, we've been hearing about special, special stabilization for the other county. Eastham, I know it's been somewhat discussed again, but we've never done it fully about it. So I'd like to know, is it, is it something we can simply get the next year in place? Or how long will it take to get that in place? And how do you go about arranging a stabilization fund, where the dollars and cents come from? This next, thank you, Brooke.
Oh yeah, I'll take the, and then Gio, if I'm missing anything, she always fills in, so I miss something, you'll fill in. So yes, basically, all of our communities now have it, and the region actually is also gonna look at separating something out. Like right now, region has got E and D, that it will go with the efficiency, um, or the, the extra, it's kind of like the town's free cash, so to speak. The region is allowed to have that, you are not, it's a single municipality, you're not allowed to have that. And so one of the reasons we looked at this a couple of years ago, we looked at this four years ago and said, listen, this is something we think you should be looking at. Especially for our single municipalities, because if you have some difficult times, which Eastham has had, you've got nowhere to go. Except back to your ratepayers, your taxpayers every year, and so it's like, okay, when, when do we say, wait, wait a minute? Do we build like a savings account, so to speak? You know, it's just, it's called a stabilization fund, but that's really what you're doing, you're, you're being proactive. And you're saying, okay, this is what, this is what we're going to do, we're gonna put this in place. And so Brewster, uh, initially, um. Put it in place, I think it was our first or second, maybe my second year here, and I think they put a hundred thousand in because they got a hundred thousand, kind of more than they anticipated. Through the chapter seventy funds out here, and it comes from all kinds of different places, it doesn't have to be one specific, and so that's what they did. That very year, we had to go back and ask, I think, for seventy-two thousand of it. Because it was, it's unanticipated needs, and they had a whole pile of unanticipated needs. And we literally had to go back and ask for seventy-two thousand of the hundred thousand that they put in. And so they, they gave it, they gave it back, there was fa, it was a smooth process. We went before the, if I remember, in Brewster, I think we went before both the pincom and the board of selectmen, and said, we need to access this money back. And they, without hesitation, they said, yes, we understand. And so we accessed that money, and then since then, we've gone back and rebuilt. And, and you know, and I think last year we had another hundred thousand that we were able to put back into that account in that ballpark. And so that, that's kind of how Brewster did it. Um, it's all been the same language, though, that, that we've put into the town. Uh, this goes before your, at your ETM, your in-town meeting, or can go for a special meeting, but that's venue that where this is approved, so to speak. Um, and then, um, I know that a wealthy is going, I think it's on this upcoming meeting, I think that they're doing their stabilization. And I think we've got a, I want to say it is around, I think it was, it was close to a hundred thousand, I think we're putting into that one. Um, Orleans started with a smaller amount, I think they started first with around forty-eight thousand or something like that in that ballpark. And then the next year they put in, were able to put in another fifty thousand, I think, that's kind of where they're sitting. And I remember one town manager, town administrator asking Peter Lombardi, was a hundred thousand enough? And he said right away, no, it wasn't. And he wishes that, and so I think that we would say the same thing, and so it's kind of like, okay, well, what's the ceiling? Well, we know that generally, if you get some of these anticipated needs, you're probably looking at, at easy a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand. So, you know, we've said all along, two to three hundred thousand is probably what you're gonna want to try to keep in that account. Um, but you know, what, whatever you can afford to put in there is kind of how we've done it. But Eastham, in all honesty, hasn't really been in the position the other communities have been in to, to have that extra. But you, you, you have to start somewhere, and so I think, you know, we're suggesting is that you go forward and open up that account. So that even if you put two dollars, and so to speak, right now, it's there and it's ready for you, because you never know what's gonna happen. Now, for example, if some of this money does come in this year, that, that Gio was talking about, you might be in a position this year. And so you might want to just make sure that you've got that ready to go, so that when you do have a little cushion in there. You can immediately put it into that account. So we, we, we would strongly encourage that you push forward. And like I say, uh, the region is looking at doing the same thing, but then you're kind of like the last community that would come on screen to do this and such. Gio, did I miss anything?
No.
If I'm understanding correctly, it's the school committee that formulates this?
Well, I think with, it ultimately has to be put onto the, uh, the warrant by your TATMs, right? That they're the ones that, that basically brought the language. But in, uh, in, in all of our communities, our school committees have taken the vote to say, yes, we support this. And we're asking that this happens, and I think that that's really where the process is right now. We're saying, we would strongly encourage you to do it, if you need to go back and think about it, we understand that. But we would strongly encourage that you put this on your upcoming um, um, ATM meeting agenda, and so.
We've school committee processes.
You, you ask for it, and then we, then we connect with your AT, with your TATM, and you know, we would connect with Jackie and say, can we please add this now? As a warrant article, and they generally do, and they generally reach out to their partners and see, you know, what the language is that they've used, and they've just used that language.
Can I ask, Brooke, so if, so if it goes on the, the town warrant, are we asking for a particular dollar amount, or are we just? Asking to open an account?
Yeah, and I mean, for whatever they need to do to open that up, if it's five dollars, two dollars, I don't care what it is, but. And then you would watch and see what happens, how your year end goes. So let's say, for example, you've got, I don't know, five thousand. Then you, then you, you direct to say, we're giving this money back to the town with the intent that it goes back into the stabilization fund.
And since it goes back to the town in that particular account, it's the school that has, you know, with permission. We access it, it, it's not, it's, it's not stabilizing anything else in Eastham, right?
No, this is very specific.
To special education?
This is too special. This is just, and, and, and the warrant is written that way, the, the warrant language is very specific on, with that, so no. Um, it's been, we've already seen it successfully work within, within Brewster, for example. So where we had to go back after it right away, but then we did start to rebuild it right away.
Devin has a question, yes, Devin.
Hi, everybody, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Terrific, so, um, love the discussion, just wanted to add one thing, um, for kind of clarity and thinking about how to. Approach the voters and, and, and all these pieces, um, on the warrant. In a kind of continuing discussion with the transportation subcommittee, I know this notion of a stabilization fund has also been raised. Good, Brooke, to sort of clarify that this is a stabilization fund for special education. But it just, in the context of this conversation for that purpose, I think it's also good to be mindful of. We're also looking for a stabilization fund for transportation, so that, it's not to complicate things, but it's just an, another layer to consider. Um, in when you ask and what you ask for.
Well, exactly, but I think that, that there is a difference here, I, I don't know, Gio, if you want to speak to that, but there's a difference, uh, Devin, so thank you for bringing that up. Uh, the transportation, we're being very strategic with that and proactive with that as well. But that's monies that are already kind of within the regular appropriations. The difference between that and this stabilization, this stabilization is just basically. If you have any free, free cash, so to speak, we don't really call it that in, in our world, but if you had, like, if you were talking municipal language. You'd say, if you had any free cash at the end, then that free cash would be designated towards the special education stabilization. The transportation is, is a little bit different, so Gio, I'm gonna turn it over to you to talk about that.
Certainly, so the transportation, um, subcommittee has been meeting, and, uh. In fiscal twenty-six budget, all of the costs for transportation are level funded. So our buses, the transportation, um, leases are up this June. So that means that, um, we have additional resources available to us. And so we're looking to utilize those resources to fund the transportation going forward for any, uh, new buses that we need to purchase. So that'll avoid any peaks and valleys in the, in the budget process. So you, you continue paying the same amount. Um, any, um, savings that I had will be put into a transportation, a capital reserve account at the collaborative. For our specific use, so you know, the collaborative is made up of many, uh, school entities, it's just for us, not for everybody else. And there'll be legal documents, um, thrown up to make sure that that is kept separate. So we'll use those, that as a funding source as we move forward in the next, you know, five to seven years. Uh, to discuss how many buses we will be replacing, the type of buses, um, that we need. Right now, we have propane buses, uh, we, you know, we're gonna stick with the propane, uh, because we are not geared up one for the electric buses. We don't have the infrastructure, uh, the, I mean, other option would be, uh, diesel, which we don't want to entertain, and. That is being phased out, and or gas, um, so the committee felt that we will continue with the current, um, configuration that we have. Uh, but we will see, you know, every year as to if we need to replace, how many we need to replace, the capacity size. Um, and you know, when, when to replace them, so that's what we're working on, we're gonna meet again in March. Uh, for more discussions, more deliberation, and, um, you know, our long range plan. But right now, there's, we're not purchasing any buses at this time, it doesn't mean that if we need to during the year that we won't. Uh, because we'll have those funds available to do so. Right now, we're leasing the buses. Um, you know, we could decide that we want to lease X number of buses or outright purchase, but that's to be determined. And the whole idea of having that, uh, capital, uh, reserve fund is to. Plan out the replacement, when initially we went to the propane buses, we purchased twenty-eight all upfront. And we leased them, um, but now, you know, like everything else, costs have gone up, the cost for a bus is more, the interest is more, on and on and on. So that'll be the next thing that we work on, so the subcommittee's been working very hard, and, um, we've accomplished quite a bit. We've had a, a few meetings, and, um, that's the plan, in March, we'll, we'll meet again and continue our discussions.
But Devin, to your point, it's like, uh, you're absolutely right, it's also like a transportation savings account, so to speak. Um, it, it's just that that money is already pre-designated. The state, the state stabilization would just be whatever money might be left over at the end of the year. One of the things that one of the TAs and TMs had at one point suggested is, is that a line? Should, should we consider, and that, that's for your consideration later on, should we consider putting a line item in there just? For monies going in there, rather than us waiting to say, hey, let's see if we've got anything left over. Like, so for example, should you put a line item in budgets moving forward that says, pick a number, twenty thousand dollars a year? Every year that you know you're gonna put in there, you know, is that something to consider? So I guess that was a suggestion by TATM, I think, two years ago, or three years ago. Two years ago, so, yeah, that's something that you can think of as well as moving forward.
Should be, Devin, another question?
Thanks, yeah, it, it's, um. So thank you, Brooke, thank you, Gio, I, my, I think what I was trying to do initially was to just advocate for. Being very clear in our language when we come up with an ask to the, the voting public. That those two things are not the same, because from afar, if you're not part of these meetings, they do sound like the same thing, and then they start to sound like you're asking me for money twice. But to Gio's very clear point, there, one's level funded, one's not. So that, that's, that's more where I was trying to come from, was, was, we, we're gonna need both of these things, we will get both of these things, but I think, just. In the way it's presented to the public, it, they can sound like the same thing, and they can sound like you're asking for money twice when we're not, and to try to. Be really cognizant of, of framing the language properly to make it actually less painful, and, or, it's not to appear less painful, because it's not.
But can I, we're not. So I'm just, to be clear, to, I don't think it's moving, sorry. So, we're just asking for the account, we're actually not asking for any money.
Right.
Right, so.
That's what I was, that's why I put this on the agenda, how do we formulate that account, and apparently goes through some of office.
Well, yeah, we'll organize that, Gio's office will organize that. I think I would, I, I, for the, the sake of just establishing a committee, you, what you're really doing is, um. Authorizing Gio Vanna's office, the business office, to go forward and ask the town of Eastham to put it on the warrant that you'd like to see especially, the special ed. Special ed stabilization fund.
May I have a motion established? To reflect what about Gio Vanna asking the town to put this on the warrant for us?
So moved.
A second?
A second.
Um, all in, fighting for the discussion before we go for a vote. Now, all in favor, Devin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, great, thank you. Getting done, thank you, and the last, let's see, out, out here is approval, approval gifts and grants. We have four gifts and grants we have received for a total of twenty-five hundred dollars, which we are grateful. For every dollar comes into the school.
I just had a comment that I think there was a typo on the second one, creating a clam.
Yeah, I don't, I think, I, I was wanting to want that one too.
I don't know if they were trying to be ironic, because. Creating a clam and save, no, I.
Did they meant a calm?
I just didn't want it to affect the use in the manner intended.
Right, you know, I'm not your Jukka planning, I can do that if they're gonna need you, but now I'm not going to, thank you. Thanks. Picking that typo up. That's great.
I make a motion to accept the gifts as described.
Second to that.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, Devin?
Yep, yeah, uh in favor, yes.
Thank you. All favor, yeah, we're all in favor. Thank you very much. Two, three, five, five. I'm also glad it's there. They're money. Really appreciate it. Um the next piece is um actually important committees. Okay, as we've heard, you've heard a lot about central office budget already, our next meeting, the last third, we hope to get that basic number down and then. Have hot burn from there. Uh let's see, what helps do I, I would like to thank the um, the uh people who did the. Search for our new superintendent. They brought us three phenomenal candidates. And we've got an outstanding new superintendent coming into, into the system. That is greatly appreciated. Here with committees upon these days, policy, they're still waiting to hear from mask. That we may have the last section of the policy manual is done sometime before Brooke and I leave and may have to celebrate the glass for. It's only been all four years we've been working on this and I'm so looking forward to it happening. I think that's all for me. Sarah?
Um I was only on the superintendent search committee because the other one.
Well, I thank you for all, I thank you for all your hours.
Um and because Monica's not here, I can say I went to the parents meeting, had uh, a parents group had a meeting last Monday. So it was a lot about discussing uh the fun run. Yeah. Be exciting. And just other, other events, you know, every class is hosting an event throughout the year. So there's two more that are happening.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I, I can't attend the wellness. So if you would love to, if there's another committee you'd like me to work on, I feel very badly that I'm kind of.
This is the last meeting, who had, who'll be heading that. Hopefully, they will get the meeting in the time slips. And for people who are working, they can attend it.
I can understand if there are staff members on that committee, they need to have a meeting right after school. I I so want to.
I intend that piece for two, but however, we're supposed to have committee, subcommittee members, most of the members with every, every school committee. So I went to see us representatives. I know, I understand why you can't.
I forgot about the communication subject.
That's right, communicate. I'm sorry, I forgot about that one.
I have not named.
I, I do. I, I, I'll just mention, yeah, for the communication committee, just so that you know, um I did meet with the uh PR firm. That we are hoping to to um kind of tag along with and they are actually joining us at our next meeting. So that'll be exciting. And I think that's the last week of February, I think, the Saturday next meeting, communication meeting. So that's the update on that.
Thank you. I think I've now covered all of me. Um Devin, I give a spring important about transportation, so we don't go through that. And Devin, any other committees? I've forgotten now. I don't remember this.
Just the collaborative and actually, we're meeting tomorrow, so nothing to tell you today. But I'll, I'll give you a report for next, next time.
If you want to send us a minute, even if it's easier for you, you can do that too, Devin. You know, minutes to us. Thank you very much to all of you for all your extra time. Okay, now the next item on the January's approval minute from January fourteenth.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from January fourteen.
I'll step into that.
A second.
Any comments or discussion on it? Here with none, may I have a motion to accept? I'm, I'm sure I'll vote to accept.
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, yes.
And a motion to adjourn.
I made a motion to adjourn.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
See you in.